All right, good evening. I'd like to call to order the school committee meeting for Tuesday, December 19th. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the public this evening on anything that's not on the agenda at the moment? Okay, great, seeing none. We'll go right on to our presentations and discussions of interest to the committee. And welcome Town Manager Libby Gibson, who's going to walk us through the FY '19 general fund budget recommendations. Hi, Libby.
Good evening. Thank you all very much. Finance Director Brian Turbitt is going to take us through the initial projections. And I think this is kind of an abbreviated version of the presentation that we gave to the Board of Selectmen at last Wednesday.
Great.
And we won't take you through every single thing we went through with them.
Okay.
Because we'd be here for quite a while. And we just really want to emphasize that we have some funds in the tax levy this year, and a little bit more than we had originally anticipated in September because as the process usually, as it has, as happens with this process, things change, more information becomes available, and we're able to pinpoint more as we, the deeper we go into the process. So Brian's just going to take us through the projections. I'm going to go over a little bit with what some of our specific recommendations are on the town side. We have met with the superintendent a couple of times about the school side of things. And I think we are mostly in agreement on those numbers. And there may or may not be other discussions to be had, but I think we're pretty well set with that.
Great.
And there may be some things that change following the board meeting. The board meets again tomorrow. About one of their agenda items is the budget again. And we have a public hearing on January 3rd. We go to the Finance Committee for an overview, similar to what we're going to do tonight. And then FinCom starts in with the departmental budget reviews, including the school.
Excellent. Excellent. Great. Well, thank you very much. Are you guys okay walking through the presentation with the printout? Or do you want to sit in the audience and look above?
I'm fine with this.
Okay. I'm fine with this. Great. Welcome, Brian.
Thank you. Good evening. So to begin with, as we work through the budget process for the recommendation, we've projected that we will be able to raise through real and personal property taxes and other revenue sources $94,830,000. We've recommended expenses in the amount of $94,581,000. There is approximately $248,000 left available within the levy capacity, which is consistent with the way we've managed things the prior years. Last year, when we started this process of the review towards town meeting, we had began with $308,000 there. So that is consistent with what we've been trying to do as we move through this process. This graph just kind of compares the summary presentation for fiscal '18 when we were here last year to what the projections are for fiscal '19, both the revenue and expenditure sides. This does show that we have balanced the budget at $94,581,000. We presented in graphical form just where the primary sources of revenue are, again, consistent with prior years. Tax revenue is approximately 86% of all revenues collected, with rooms and meals tax coming in next at 4% of the total revenue available to the town to allocate. Then we kind of carve out the expenditures in that same format to show the ratios of all the different areas where the money is allocated within the town. So the general fund budget expense categories. To begin with, we're recommending $7,653,000 for town operational expenses. It's a very slight increase over last year. Included in that is $571,900 of expense increase requests or new initiatives, either an ongoing or one-time. It's important to note that 0.1% decrease is actually derived because we have some, there were some larger one-time items in last year's operational side on the town. One of them that we can specifically note is there, we funded $200,000 for the townwide revaluation as mandated by the state that no longer is necessary. So that funding has actually been pulled, that had been backed out from the starting point. We're recommending $194,460,000 in salaries for townwide personnel. Included in that is $541,000 of expense increase requests. The school side, in discussions with allocator, this is the breakdown that I received from the Chief Financial Officer from the school. Operational expenses, $5.4 million, which includes $228,000 of expense increase requests, some ongoing, and there is some additional money that we'll talk about in a little bit later slide, for one-time expenses. School salaries of $23.4 million, which does include $455,000 of personnel. Fixed costs within the budget. Health insurance is projected to be just over $12 million. It is a 3.3% decrease from the prior years. It's important to note that fiscal '19 will be the first full year with the implementation of sections 21 through 23 with the plan design changes. When we were before the Board of Selectmen in September, this was a much higher number. And once the, once the plan design was implemented, we went back through and reviewed all of that, how that impacted, and we were able to reduce this by about $600,000 to have funding to reallocate within the entire town appropriation. General insurance, we're proposing a 7.4% decrease based on the conversations with our consultant and insurance claims. Two years ago, we actually put the entire insurance book of business out to bid and received a substantial reduction. And we've been hedging our bets last year on potential increases, but we feel confident that even decreasing to this number will still keep us within, within the number that we need to get to. Debt services, $7 million. Includes funding for the new school project and all other previously appropriated projects. It is a reduction because there is some debt that has been, that comes off that was debt excluded. So the ability to raise that money in the tax levy goes away once that project is, the debt's fully paid. Retirement is always a big unknown for us because it's one of the ones that they, we work with Barnstable County Retirement, and they go through a very detailed process. In conversations with them, we've projected an 8.5% increase. We certainly are hoping that it will not be in that range, that it will come down. Enterprise fund subsidies, which are the solid waste or the transfer of the landfill out on Maticat Road and Island Home, are recommended at $8250,000. We also have some special appropriations within the general fund that we fund every year. Health and Human Services. We have recognized that there's a need, and there's continuously more requests for funds than we have been allocating. So we have proposed a $50,000 increase to $450,000 there. For county assessment, reserve fund, unpaid bills, and other post-employment benefits, we have recommended no changes from the prior year funding level. Cherry Sheet charges, we're anticipating a small increase tied to the current NRTA service. This does not take into account the recently approved year-round service that will actually impact us in 2021. The community school, last year we had allocated $465,000. The $65,000 was for the off-site location. We, the superintendent and the Chief Financial Officer had asked for $450,000. We have recommended that $450,000 level for this year. We recommended to the Selectmen at the meeting last week, $800,000 to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I know based on their meeting that there's some discussion about that number. So that is one of the things that we're internally still discussing and will continue with them. The town code requires a minimum of 1% from prior real estate and local estimated receipts collected to be raised and appropriated and funded directed towards capital. That number's $898,000. So all told, that brings us to the $94,581,000 that we're proposing being allocated to fund, to general fund operations. The town side, there were $3.7 million worth of submitted requests for additional funding. $1.2 million has been recommended, made up of one-time events or ongoing, $273,000 and ongoing of $983,000. They'll be funded through available tax levy, budget adjustments, alternate funding sources, free cash. And we have reviewed all potential revenue increases, and we're comfortable with the local estimated receipts numbers that we've projected. I will let the Town Manager briefly go over this slide.
So these are just some of the, not some, these are the expense increase requests that we are recommending in the budget with available funding. And we have several positions, as you can see. I won't go through every single one of these because I know that you're probably more concerned and focused on the school positions. But we have some directive from the board that we really need to focus on. Infrastructure and other areas such as code enforcement. We have some mandates that have come up fairly recently regarding the open meeting law and public records issues. So we're trying to address that. And we think we can do a good amount of that with existing revenue for the positions that are listed here. We also have a number of operating expense increase requests. And as Brian mentioned, some of these are one-time, some are ongoing. And some of the one-time items would be funded outside of the tax levy from other revenue available to the town, such as the beach revolver or the ambulance reserve fund. And that's listed, I think, on the next slide. Something that we are focusing on, and I don't know if the school is focusing on this or not, but one of the items is municipal employee housing rent. And I'm sure as you have run into, we also have run, routinely now, more and more, run into situations when we need to hire a higher-level employee who probably will come from not within the town, or within the Island Community. They need, their chances of staying here are much better if housing is secured for them when they get there. So our thought is to appropriate some amount of funds to secure a unit for whoever might be coming along next. We probably have at least three pending right now. And then once we're, once we've hired someone, they would go into the unit and assume the rental payments, and then we could use the remaining funds to rent another unit. So we're having a lot of internal discussion about how to turn that into some kind of a policy or ongoing program. But that's something we're going to start out for this year. Next slide is the...
So the next slide, so the next slide details exactly how we get, what funding sources for the $1.2 million. Tax levy and other revenues is $839,000. Free cash for one-time expenses is $192,900. And there's $81,000 of other available funds for the ambulance reserve to purchase some of the CPR device that they're looking for, as well as the beach improvement revolver, excuse me, to fund some of that. There's also some potential departmental budget reallocations that would fund some initiatives as well. Preliminary free cash recommendation, I always say preliminary even at this point because it's always subject to change as we move through this budget process. Was certified effective July 1st of 2017 in the amount of $6215,000. We have proposed spending $192,900 for town expense increase request one-time. We've proposed funding $133,000 of school expense increase request one-time items. We propose $4.6 million of town and school capital projects to be funded by that money. In here, we have the $800,000 for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which would leave an unallocated balance of $484,000, which is consistent as we move through this process of leaving some funding flexibility in case there's any unknowns between town and town I'm really not going to bore everybody with this slide or try to get into the absolute mechanics of this, but what this is related to is Island Home and how we're funding it. We currently allocate $1.5 million out of the general fund. The town administration, we've had a discussion internally about how to do this. We had a proposal to the Board to reduce that subsidy and increase their use of retained earnings to potentially fund additional needs between the town and the school. I think it's safe to say we heard relatively loud and clear that they may not want to fund ongoing operational expenses from that. So we are internally restrategizing what that strategy might look like in pursuit of this potential option that we have recommended. The other two options very quickly fell off the table, so it's probably not worth even mentioning what we were going to do with them.
This slide showed some of the areas that we would fund if we had additional funding from the Island Home option. However, as you can see, there are no numbers associated with it. And the idea was to potentially fund some expenses that we weren't able to fund within the tax levy or other general revenues, including some amount for the school, which we were talking to the superintendent about. But as Brian mentioned, we did hear loud and clear from the board and also from some members of the FinCom subsequently, that they're not supportive necessarily of using the Island Home funding for ongoing expenses. They prefer it to be one-time. And I think we agree with that approach because there is some uncertainty about it. So this is sort of under construction right now.
I think this is going to stop for a moment.
Okay. So just, I'll try to get quickly through these slides. We have some administration and Board of Selectmen goals and priorities for 2019 that we identified at the beginning of the process, and they're all listed here. I won't go through every single one of them, but one of them is, maybe the highest one, is investment in infrastructure and facilities. That's, and also project management. That's been mentioned quite a bit at Finance Committee, Capital Program, and Board of Selectmen. So we're trying to get at that. Housing is obviously an issue. The Board is going to be undergoing a strategic plan process this year, beginning in January. So there may be additions to accommodate that as well. Some of the initiatives, needs, and goals that are addressed with our budget recommendations are shown here. And we are proposing additional funding in public works and facilities for the infrastructure issues that I mentioned, as well as project management. We've got some water quality issues, code enforcement, and we've got a number of plans coming up that are going to need to be updated and then some implementation. Efforts to reduce expenses and increase efficiency and transparency. Many of this is, much of this is ongoing as a matter of routine. When positions become vacant, we review staffing. We're always looking at, can we consolidate? Can we cross-train? Can we provide training opportunities that reduces reliance on consultants or other resources? We're often looking at refining our internal controls. There's a state program called the Compact Community. We've applied for one grant so far and received funding to update our financial policies. And we're looking at a second one. And we're also seeking a grant for a recycling coordinator in this always enterprise fund budget. There are a few outstanding items and current unknowns. They're shown here. We're not sure what will come out of the Board of Selectmen's strategic plan. So that's, you know, there will need to be some discussion about that. We've discussed with the Board, this is at least the third year we've talked about an override for our Island Home. And we've begun discussing possibly, the possibility of an override in connection with the NRTA year-round service. As Brian mentioned, that charge will hit the town's budget in 2021. We ought to be thinking now about how we are going to fund that because it will be an impact on the town's operating budget. We always have collective bargaining issues. Health insurance is a constant concern with, I'm sure you all are familiar with Cadillac Tax, which is not gone away at this point. And it's something that's kind of looming on the horizon. State aid is always something to be looking at, although our, the current state administration has many times referenced that they intend to keep state aid at minimum level if not increased. Chapter 90 is a state allocation to all cities and towns for road work. And we don't usually know that number until April or May. Well, I guess April, maybe somewhere between March. Harbor Place is a project that you're going to start hearing some more about. It's the area where the tank farm is now. And once the tank farm moves out of town, there's an opportunity for redevelopment there. And there is room potentially for the town to get involved in the planning process. So we're not, again, that's just beginning now. We're not sure what will come out of that. I'm sure everybody's heard in various social media and news media outlets about federal tax reform possibilities. So we're keeping an eye on that. And there are always, well, not always, but there may be potential cost impacts depending on the citizen warrant articles. We've started to look at them. And some of the ones that may or may not have a cost impact aren't deemed legal. So hopefully, they're not really a concern. But I'm sure we're going to nevertheless spend time arguing about them at town meeting. Next steps include tonight and tomorrow night at the Board of Selectmen's meeting on January 4th. As I mentioned earlier, we have an annual public hearing at which hopefully the Board will endorse the, a recommended budget. It may not be entirely what we gave them last week, but it will be some version of that. We review the recommended budget with the FinCom on January 8th, and then they start meeting with everybody. We have some enterprise fund and county presentations to give to the Board in January. And then we culminate with everything on Tuesday, April 4th, with an annual town meeting.
Fantastic.
We're happy to answer any questions that any of you have.
Are there any questions from the committee? Thank you. Thanks very much, Libby. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
We're saving your questions. Dun, dun, dun. And I just wanted to add a quick note to, for the public's benefit, that the school committee's budget hearing is January 16th, 2018. So tonight is our preliminary review of department budgets. And on the 16th, the public will have a chance for a hearing at that point. So thank you again very much for coming out tonight. Okay. Mr. Cozart, would you like to just go down the list?
I would love to. I just want to give some background, maybe not so much for the school committee, but those people who are in our audience who may not know what has already transpired leading up to this. Our administrative team begins in September. And we're looking at their, developing their budget, and they work on that from September through November. Throughout that time, they are working with their school councils to talk about the needs of the particular school and to get input from those council members who are made up of parents, community members, and staff. And so they, they work pretty diligently, and it ramps up from September to November. And the work really of the school council is critical to that. Then throughout that time, probably mid-October through yesterday or today, the administrative team meets, talks about the priorities for the entire district. And they submitted a total of $1.6 million in personnel requests. You may remember that we presented the roll forward figure at the last meeting, just rolling our existing budget forward is about a $650,000 price tag. And so with a $1.2 million increase, we're looking at about $550,000 in increases. Some of those increases were presented to you at the last meeting. We had a, the presentations by the Technology Department and Facilities Department. So there were some requests in there, and I'll touch on one or two of those again tonight. But you have had those. To get from the $1.6 million down to $550,000, you know, is a, is a challenge. And I want to be very clear that there were things left unaccomplished, and we have to prioritize in all of the schools. And then at some point, we have to consider what I call addition by subtraction. If we have something that we really want, and we don't have the new appropriation monies, then we need to look at what we're willing to give up to get that other thing. And there's been some of that work, and you'll hear a few things as we present tonight. So the, each principal is prepared to come up, talk about their budget. We did not intend for them to go through line by line. That's the support information for you. And they will highlight the changes, probably the percentage of the overall budget that is theirs. And Karen has very nicely set up all of these budget presentations on the board so that the viewing public can see it as we're following along with our heads down. So we'll kick off as we usually do with Nantucket Elementary School. This is the first year that we have split those two budgets. And so we'll go in order from Kim to Eve Marie, and then Peter and John, and then into Central Office.
Sounds great. Thank you.
And of course, if you have questions, you can ask them at any point.
Great. Welcome, Kim.
What do you think? So always I like the lovely pictures on the front of things that are... If you're looking at page two, you can certainly see that there's about 3% of the budget that I get to move around and share for supplies and professional development services and such. The recommended changes that relate to staffing, and we didn't change much in the supply except to move money around based on where we have been spending. So staffing, we are looking to have two full-time reading interventionists at the elementary school. And our thought on that is we want to do everything we can to make sure we're sending readers over to the intermediates. And so currently, we have 1.5. And we're doing everything we can that we feel like with two full-time, we'll be able to really provide intervention services, really do early intervention, and then keep going. You can go actually to page three here. Thank you. Sorry, hope you don't mind being this...
No, not at all.
And so I think that that will put us in good stead to be able to really do the early intervention, provide that tier-three intervention, and then even do some RTI work that will hopefully support our kids better. In addition, our pre-Ks have been blessing. And there are a lot of children out there who are receiving early intervention services, and they are coming to us. Our pre-Ks are integrated pre-Ks, which means we have students with some special needs and half peers. And we try to always have a few more peers, but we also want to make sure our kids are getting opportunities to integrate. And with just two, we needed to certainly expand last year, and we would like to bring that up to a full-time pre-K teacher. It's currently four days. And that will give us some flexibility to have different kinds of programs for our different kinds of children. And in order to support that, we need the point two for a pre-K teaching assistant so that there will always be two adults in that room. And then the last budget move is, I believe, budget neutral, but it is to put an additional sped teacher in our building. We have co-teaching in our building, K2. Last year, we had one of our special ed liaisons who worked with students in kindergarten and first grade, and we shared two teaching assistants. So that there were always two adults in those four rooms flipping back and forth, sort of. And the numbers of students that had IEPs in kindergarten and first last year, you could combine for an appropriate caseload. So that moves up this year to first and second. And so we have one person doing first and second, and we have one person doing K. Next year, the numbers are too significant for one person to share two graders. So that the number of students going into K will be larger, and it will be a full caseload for each of those teachers.
And if I can just add, so we have a teacher that was, a teacher that was at the elementary school who had been moved into a district position, is now going back to the elementary school. That's why it's budget neutral.
Anyone have any questions specifically for Kim? Fantastic. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Eve Marie?
Thank you.
Hello. Hi. So as I look at the graph, it shows that NIS is approximately 14% of the entire school budget. And I can also share with you some of our additions that support teaching and looking at the intermediates. You can see on the first line there, it says move our half-time reading intervention teacher to NES. And so what we're going to do instead is kind of add a half a position. And I thought we were to add a new English Language Arts coordinator slash coach to our school. As a school staff and in collaboration with NES administration and also with Jean Witt, Director of Humanities, and we're looking at all of our data together. At student progress over time, we definitely want to support teachers' sustained, ongoing, and internal professional development in the area of literacy. So that's, that's the catalyst for my... We definitely want to support teachers sustained, ongoing, and internal professional development in the area of literacy. So that's, that's the catalyst for my need for the position. They're going to do things like curriculum mapping with us, support implementation of any new ELA initiatives in our school. They can go into classrooms and model for teachers. They can co-teach with teachers. They can support teachers through observation. That's not a value to, and provide that honest feedback and support. They will facilitate professional development for us during meetings and also during PD days. That would be another part of their role. They'll meet, we communicate with three levels, three-level teams and look at data, do discussions. Use that data to do class instruction. Assess students who are experiencing difficulty and support teachers who support those students in their classrooms as well as students that might be achieving at high levels. And also working with our ESL teachers, our special education teachers, our деталь teacher, to also support the differentiation within the classroom instruction. These are some of the goals and responsibilities. It's a big job, but...
Do you, can you give us a number of about how many students are receiving reading intervention services right now?
Actually, I don't have that data right in front of me.
Okay.
But I know that we have a lot and we always are, struggle to decide who gets it because we wish we could give it to more. But one thing that we recognize, especially given our last conversation to regard to MPS data and all of our other data that we've looked at, is that our first responsibility is to really work on our classroom instruction and make it the very best that it can be. And we feel like with everything that NIS is doing and with that initiative at NIS, that we will see that need for intervention for struggling readers and writers to decrease over time as there'll be less of a need for it if we have that early intervention. And we'll have stronger classroom instruction to support and differentiate for new.
Thank you. Any more questions about that?
Okay. Working with Kelly Coney, our Director of English learners, we determined that we were in need of an additional teacher for ELS. We also need a grade-five teacher next school year as our students are moving up. And it looks like we've made that position for several years in a row. We'll look at our second third with three options. And we also are asking for, last year, I believe you all agreed that it'd be wonderful if we could have a point-two Spanish teacher at the intermediate school and allocate money for that. And we tried really hard to find somebody, but it's challenging for such a small position. So we're asking for an additional point-two, make it point-four, and offer Spanish classes to hopefully improve our resources.
Awesome.
I'm just going to interrupt if I, if I may. We have presently, let's see, five, actually six sections of fourth grade going into five sections of fifth grade. So that's why the extra section there. And presently, we have a, one teacher who teaches ELL who is shared with the elementary and intermediate. And she will be going full-time back to NIS. And that's another one of the reasons that we want to add an ELL teacher.
Great. So anybody else have any other questions for Eve Marie?
Do they?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Cohen. Welcome.
Thanks. So we have, as you know, class sizes that are growing and the popularity of taking world languages is corresponding to that same growth. So those class sizes are large and triple that for the high schools. And you hear from Dr. Bucky how we need to have full-time world language teachers there. And so we want to make sure we are able to maintain offering more than world language at the middle school. So we've got a retirement coming up. So we'll be looking for a Spanish teacher. And we'll also be looking for a full-time teacher for Mandarin Chinese program to continue at the middle school.
Great. So Peter, just to clarify this, reduction in the Spanish teachers, is this the differential between the current teacher's salary and the prospective new teacher coming in? Not eliminating a position?
Correct. Our PE classes are really large right now. And so we're asking for a point-two PE teacher to alleviate those class size issues. And we've been anticipating this next request, this special ed teacher. We had a little bit of a hiatus where the population of kids with significant special needs who are now at the high school who are with us. And we built a new addition, we built a classroom specifically looking at kids coming in the future. And they'll be coming next year. One is with us now and that student will be joined by a few others. And there are more following next year's class as well. So we need a lead teacher that can work with the students with special needs.
Easy. Any questions for Peter? Thank you very much. Dr. Bucky? Hi.
Mike, that's good. Just to go over the changes with you. So that's on page three of the high school budget. As Dr. Cohen said, world language interest is increasing. And so last year when we did budget at this time, we had the 6.4 Latin split with the high schools. But then after of course signup, we had 43 students sign up for Latin I, which is too large for one section. So Dr. Cohen was super accommodating at the 11th hour this fall and gave us the additional section. So we're just looking to go really from 0.8, which we have this year, to 1.0 for next year. Mandarin Chinese right now is combining levels three and four. Interest in that program also increases. That Latin's, those is four standard one sections. We require four semesters of PE and one of help. And with the increase in our numbers, we had two, then 2.4, 2.6, and 2.8 this year. I'd like to see three full-time help PE teachers just because there are a couple of PE sections this year that are borderline uncomfortable large. And the landscaping, I would like to see that program expand. So for next year, I'm asking for a point-two, but with the eye to the future that that will become our fourth full-time education program. And then we have a teaching assistant who's one-to-one, will be aging out. So we will need to roll in that special ed teaching assistant.
Any questions here, Dr. Bucky?
I don't have a question. I would just point out something that I'm sure you've seen. So Latin will become just a high school-only course moving forward next year.
Great. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Central Office. Hi, Martin.
Hello. I'd like to start by just, you did get there as an attachment. I will go over central, but you did get an attachment to keep the postchanges overall.
Yeah.
So I want to go a little overall the budget first and then I'll go over central. The budget is increasing this year for the school by 4.8%. With what's been recommended, what is being given by town. The changes to the budget that will stay within the budget and become part of the roll forward for the next school year are at $1.2 million. And we did receive $133,000 in addition that Brandon Lind presented earlier in the meeting. Those are one-time expenses. They will go towards a technology request for equipment. I just wanted to point that out, they will not be part, when we go next year to the town, that these will not be part of our roll forward. As far as the central office goes, we, it's a little different breakdown for the central office. If you look at the chart, payroll is 52%, a little over half. There is 39% of the budget in the current school year goes towards contracted services. And that is mostly due to a special education, tuition accounting part of that, as well as different consulting and professional service accounts that fall into this calculation, as well as technology. Technology, hardware, software is part of these budgets as well. That's why the breakdown is different than you see at the schools, individual schools, predominantly payroll.
So I'm, I'm just going to jump in. So I want to clarify, so the 52% is, the central office payroll is 52% of the central budget.
Right.
Right? Not 52% of the school budget.
Right.
Not, it's only 16%.
That's important to clarify.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify.
Now, I, I went to the second slide, just the breakdown of the internal central budget. New additions to central office this year include interpreter, translator position. This is, as you have seen by presentations by the Director of English Language Learning, Kelly Coney. There is been over 600% growth in the past 10 years of English language learners. And in addition to that, the technology additions were presented at last school committee meeting. The projected medical insurance offset to town, that's a new item that you might have a question or two about. This is, we were told by town this year for the first time that we would be allowed to hire a specific amount of people. If we go over that amount of people as new hires, that would require health benefits, we would haul the town back at a set amount of $30,000 to offset these health benefits. Our projections include two people over the five that we were told to do. So that's the $60,000 there.
I see.
And the other part is the roll forward. If you have any questions about central?
I'll just jump in. Obviously, with the increase of children who speak foreign languages, we have an increase in parents, community members. And we, Eileen Taveras has done a, a, the open's job of being our one district interpreter. But the, those needs, whether they're for report card meetings in an elementary school or a special education meeting or a 504 meeting, you know, really demand that we have another interpreter. We do also, I think the school committee will remember that we did hire a guidance counselor in one of the schools who can speak Spanish. We are always looking for that person who can add value in both their role and in the language that they can speak. And that's been a significant benefit to the intermediate school this year.
I do, I do have just one quick question, if you don't mind, Martin. On the chapter 70, is it chapter 766 consultants line item? When you look across it and it was actual 104,017. No, 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 that's not the one I'm looking at. Sorry, 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 sorry. Tuition. That rate is going down significantly. Do we, is that based on numbers or?
You talked about the special education.
Special ed tuition, yes, thank you.
I will address that.
Okay, great. Great, 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 great. Sorry, it was all in this one budget, so I was a little confused. Okay.
This presents a lot of central and then there is special education separately and, you know.
Perfect. All right, fantastic. Well, take a seat and we'll call you back up. Chris.
How are you?
Great. How are you?
Good to see you.
Welcome.
Basically, you've got, you track it. Obviously, you've got the appropriation graph with the appropriations graph. You see the athletics graph, the overall school budget, which is consistent year, year after year. That's also consistent with the state averages. And those appropriation graphs, you see a major part of our expenses, our payroll. And that was down between, salary, 190, it was a straight event. The other big tick for athletics obviously is the travel factor. Roughly about $175,000 a year.
Which seems so low, considering how many students travel so often. I mean, I just want to again give a huge thank you to the Steamship Authority and Highland Cruises for their generous support of low-cost travel options for our students. It's remarkable.
I've also put in here a narrative that just gives you an idea of participation for the last year. And I won't go through that and you, you can read that on your own. The department financials, basically, you know, covered it. There have been some additions in our departments from a standpoint of, we went from a part-time ATE to a full-time ATE. And we've added, we're adding to some sports. Cross-country, we went to a varsity level sport this year. Tennis is still on board of the club level program. They're going to be JV level program this fall. Also, we have done a restructuring from a, our standpoint of our statements that has worked to increase our statements for our middle school coaches, which we feel is a big part. The good news with all that is we're able to, we've been able to cover the, the cost of any of our increases within our budget figures and participation fees that we collect. You can see you've got a spreadsheet in there that shows you basically what we collect the last year's teachers. And they're entered by $115,000 in participation fees. And you can get used to help on the athletic program and help us to be able to make additions to that.
Chris, it might be interesting for you to share some of the things that that revolver, those fees paid for supplies, uniforms, that sort of thing.
We basically, we will use the revolver and the participation fees. We collect to offset a lot of different things, everything from purchase salaries, tuition, transportation costs, to equipment costs, any area where we, if there's no funding, we will pull from that revolver.
Great. I have two quick, one question and then a quick comment. The insurance, does that get bid out every few years? Am I remembering that correctly or is that an annual?
That has typically gotten bid out. The insurance package is a catastrophic insurance package. Basically, if there was some type of a major injury sometime, that's actually a central office expense.
Okay. Great.
But that does get bid out eventually.
Okay, great. And then my only other comment is, and I, I know that we've talked with you about this before and I know it's on the top of your mind, but just to say again, any outreach that we can do, particularly if we have an additional translation support to help encourage all of our kids to participate in athletics and that the communication of participation fees and there being scholarships available for that, I think is just really important to keep our finger on the pulse of.
One of the things that we have done from a standpoint of, we're sending out emails regarding registration support, we are sending that.
Great, great, great. Yeah, I just think the, knowing that there's some support for not having to pay the participation fee, there's scholarships available for some families, I think is important.
Absolutely. We can, we can comfortably say that no child has been kept out of any sport in our district as a result of the participation fees.
Right. We make that point clear with all of our student after-party.
Yeah, yeah. I just, you know, my, my observation really is just about the people who haven't yet started to participate in athletics and for whom that may, they see the fee and it may just be, you know, a gating issue to even talking about it. So anything we can do to help soften that and sell athletics to all of our families. Because it is a tremendous program and has so many benefits off and on the field. So thank you so much, Chris. Does anybody else have any questions?
No, cross-country, actually went to a varsity level school this year. And did it very successfully. And listen, the venue's going to have a football stadium. We will have a football. We will. The venue will have a football stadium. Actually, the venue is going to, not next year, but five years, will be in the same location.
Interesting. Even more fun. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, I'm so sorry. It's on.
Any reason why we don't show the difference between the fee and the waiver as opposed to adding them together? Sorry, that's just a math thing for me.
Shoot me, what do you mean?
Oh, well, you have the total fee, I'm assuming the people that were able to pay?
If you look at that spreadsheet, you'll see it breaks it down as to pay them and what.
Right, and I'm just wondering why you don't net it out?
In what way?
Why don't you net it out, so we, like, have a truer figure as to what was brought in? Do you know what I mean? You have the fee, total fees that were able to be paid, and it was a wave, why don't we see the difference as opposed to fee plus the waiver? I'm just curious as to why it's presented in such a way. That's just a general question.
I mean, it's just presented in a way where basically, you've got, um, you've got the fees that were funded, and then you've got the fees that were waived. The majority of the ways we were collecting were forms of scholarships and donations.
So it is actually income?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. She'll have a point. Wonderful, she wasn't...
Yeah, she was really within the, I should have...
Within the central office. Come on up. Clearly, I have a question for you.
You wanna start with that?
No, I'd like you to go first. Welcome.
So, if you can see, the special services budget is about 21% of the school budget. I have talks about hiring 14 students in technical schools that are on IEPs. Overall, the payroll is 70% of our budget. And then going to the third page where it talks about proposed changes. So, if you can see, I'm actually proposing a special, you know, saying that, but just within this piece, because obviously, I support this new specialist teacher, the middle school, and some of the other special positions in those schools. So, starting at the top, we're proposing adding a special team chair. This would be split to two schools, yet to be decided. As a team chair, that person would be responsible for running evaluation meetings, signing IEPs, kind of a problem solver at two building levels, to help support the teachers and their business and working parents. Most districts have team chairs.
I was just gonna say, who's responsible for that currently?
Um, kind of me.
Okay.
We have school psychologists, and we'll do the evaluations, but the liaisons, the principal teachers pick up a piece of it in terms of scheduling meetings. But I review and sign every single IEP meeting, and given that we have about 446 students, I can't go to every meeting. I'm the out-of-district coordinator, so I certainly go to them. The principals, assistant principals often are attending meetings as well. But this just gives a little bit of oversight over the IEP and help us to be a little bit more consistent and align our services based on what the students' needs are, making sure we're getting our, doing our IEPs out quickly to here. So, right now, if I have a question about the IEP, you know, I can bring it back for editing, but if I'm not, meaning I can't overturn a team decision. So this gives, as a team chair, is that authority to commit to financial resources. So right now, it is the principals or assistant principals or myself.
So, I'll just add that originally, we had two positions put in, two team chairs, one for the elementary intermediate and one for the middle high school. And we're working towards that model, because it will give us a lot better, as Michelle said, not only consistency, but your monitoring of the IEP and making sure that certain services required are being met.
Yeah.
And so, it's a move that we've talked about for a while, and its time has come, it just will come from the stages.
Thank you.
So right now, we have psychologists at the middle school and preschool, 14 psychologists at the elementary NIS, so this would kind of be a, that kind of model to help with consistency, oversight, and consultation. The second position is a speech and language pathologist, as which mentioned, you know, we're having more and more needs at the elementary school levels, more and more students coming in with disabilities at the preschool level, and also students that are English language learners. And it's been really tight this year to make sure that we are providing all the speech and language services that our students need. So, proposing another position. And I'm also proposing a point two increase to our current occupational therapist who works one day a week as an employee. In order to fund those positions, I'm proposing a decrease in the speech and language consultant position and occupational therapy consultant position. So by changing those, reducing the consultants to employees, we're actually saving money. And again, we're able to provide consistency and able to provide more speech and language therapy. We had a teacher, a preschool teacher who was newly certified as preschool teacher and as a speech and language pathologist, and she retired November 1st, and so she was kind of filling that need. So when she retired, we filled her position with a preschool teacher, and we still have this gap with the speech and language. So I did increase the consultant for this year to make sure that we're providing those, but it would be wonderful next year we could have our own employee. And then, in terms of decreasing the tuition line, we, next year, have several students that will be either graduating, turning 22 years old, we also had another student who returned from residential school. So I'm confident that we can decrease the tuition line by 20,000, since we're providing our services for this year. And then, I kind of mentioned about decreasing the consultant's line to cover those. Any other questions?
So, any other questions?
Good.
Okay. Um, thank you, you answered my question. I guess I'm, I heard what you said and I'm feeling just a little bit confused, because the need is growing of children who are requiring services. By having staff sort of replacing a one-to-one ratio, we're not increasing the amount of staff servicing?
What we had was two days of the speech and language consultant.
Okay.
And I'm proposing a full time, so we get five days.
Okay, okay.
We did bump it up to about two and a half with the recent retirement.
Okay.
So that person added more time, that was not really, like, in the budget at the beginning of the year.
Gotcha.
We're only adding a day of an OT, and we'll have to see how that goes, because we're decreasing two days. So we're losing one day of OT, but we're gaining three days of speech and language.
Yeah, I think that's where my concern is, is in the decrease of occupational therapy.
So, what's happened over time, we use consultants, because unless you have a 1.0 position, it's hard to recruit somebody to come here.
Right.
So, in the past, the need for that particular speech and language consultant might have been two days a week. You're probably spending more in consultant costs than you are to have your own staff member. And so, I would say it's probably increasing the speech therapy by .4. You know, I don't know if you agree with that, Michelle, but .4 or .6?
Probably at least .5, .6 at this point.
Right. So, that's a definite, we probably need to look at the OT going arguably more, and Michelle did argue for that. It starts to get into the health insurance piece, when you go to .6 as well, and it's difficult to find that part-time person.
Right.
So, without getting into names of particular people who occupy them, we do have an OT who's worked in our district in the past at almost a 1.0, who stepped back from that 1.0 this year. And so, they're gaining some more time, you know, for next year. But you're right, we do need to...
Yeah.
That need is growing.
It's growing, and I'm concerned that while we're making some adjustments, we're sort of moving the chess pieces for the same net result, and I'm concerned about the kids who need occupational therapy, and that may be an instance where we have to look at the existing budget and make cuts to provide, to be able to provide that service, because that's a required service, and we don't want to sell ourselves short or our families and kids short by not having it funded appropriately. Especially after what Kim had just presented to us.
Right. I feel like a month ago, I would have thought it would have been fine, but now it's, kids are starting to get evaluated, and more needs are coming up. But we did hire a co-op, which is occupational therapy assistant, which is brand new to share.
Okay.
We still have a full-time occupational therapy therapist. This one would be in addition, or in replacement, two days.
Yeah.
Especially as the students get older, they have less need for occupational therapy, right? And we still have our physical therapist who's... Which, there's a little bit of overlap with them, too, I think she's in fourth. But, I mean, we can, we can always be...
Yeah, I mean, the line item is really for you to negotiate amongst yourselves, but I just, that's a flag to me.
The budget that we're presenting tonight is still in process.
Yeah, absolutely.
And we are, we continue to look at that.
Yep, and this is our first look at it, too, so...
As we do some other needs and wants, and it may be through changes in staff, when sometimes when you have somebody retiring that creates an opportunity. Martin and I shared the concern that the consultant line not go down too far, because you may have to go back.
Right, and consultants are very, they provide a great service for us when we can't fund, or when we can't find a person to fill a position. So, I appreciate that.
And some of our consultants are doing a lot of professional development with their teachers, consulting landmark, that is working with them on language-based classrooms. So there's, you know, other types of consultants in addition to therapists.
Yeah, and just knowing, based on everything we've heard, that, you know, the enrollment numbers of students, the younger years with identifiable needs, and so I just, I just, we'll just keep our eyes on everything. Are there any other questions for Michelle? Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then we'll bring Martin back to the hot seat for the community school presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The community school, we had the team meetings in light of the departure of the new school director, with all the team leaders in developing this budget. We felt that the initial projections that were given to us by the outgoing director were not exactly accurate, so we had to meet individually with the team leaders. We adjusted those projections down, and we feel this is a well-rounded, balanced budget that we achieve well. It is increasing by $11,000 over what we currently have in fiscal year 18, and if we go by the different breakdowns, you will see that the first chart, the expenses by programs, the highest expense of post-center is the community pool, then it's the admin office, the extended day, and the summer program. The next slide is actually the one that is always interesting. This is the breakdown of the funding sources of the community school. As we know, there are three of them. The public appropriation, as we mentioned, is gonna be $450,000 for fiscal year 19. That represents 28% of the budget of the community school. The fundraising donations will be a little over $76,000 projected at this point, and they represent 5% of the budget, and the rest, almost $1.1 million, or 67% of the budget is program revenue. We just wanted to share, we felt that the discussions were robust, we were presented with detailed forecasts with programs and revenue sources for each individual revolver within the community school, so we'll see how the years goes. So far, this year, as you will see in the second quarter presentation that's upcoming in January, the community school has seen improvement in certain revolvers that were sort of lagging last year, one of them being the adult ed revolver. The summer camp revenue came up stronger than last year. So, there is several things that I will share in the upcoming meeting, I just wanted to point them out here, that they were taken into consideration when developing the budget, make it more in line with what the actual trends are. The application of the school committee appropriation, it's no surprise, most of it will go towards the admin office revolver, 68%, 18% goes, go to early childhood enrichment, and then followed by adult ed and adult literacy. The next graph is very interesting, it presents a 20-year history of appropriation and participancy and donation breakdown. As you can see, starting in 97, 98, this was a little under $200,000. It has grown, but so have the costs associated with the community school, meaning most prominently the health insurance, cost that were absorbed within the community school in 2010, 2011, I believe, around that time. And they have been growing. As you will see, they are projected to be about $217,000 for the upcoming fiscal year. The rest of it is detail of the breakdown, as you see, each revolver is balanced. Page 10 of 11 lists all the gifts and donations that were received for fiscal year 17, the ones that have been received and are expected to be received within the current fiscal year, and the projected ones for fiscal year 19.
That's pretty amazing. Does anyone have a question, Martin? Martin, I have a question and a comment, if you don't mind. Does this presume that all these programs are gonna roll forward in the same way? And so there's no substantive changes in the programming presented in this budget proposal?
Okay. As far as personnel, or as far as...
I would just say, in terms of how the programs are running, I know that we've been presented with some issues and possible deficits, and so I'm just wondering if this has accounted for any program changes that we should be aware of? It sounds like no.
I don't think so, but I think that the community school certainly is going to undergo an evolution whenever you bring in a new director, and they will look at things a little bit differently. They will examine what has worked in the past. I think I said to a group, I'm not sure if it was the school committee, it's very hard for an organization like the community school to develop a five-year strategic plan, because things are changing so much faster than that. And the community school has to reflect the changes in the community. So it may be that a three-year plan is more appropriate as they take a look at it, but even within a three-year plan, every year, you're examining what you're offering and determining whether you're going to go forward with it. Or, as has happened in the last five to 10 years, more and more organizations are doing some of the same things. So you have to decide, do we continue to do that, or is that now covered by another organization that we don't need to fill that community need? So I think it's a time to examine and determine, you know, how it can best serve the community.
Yeah, I agree.
And maybe not in as many ways.
I agree. And I think a three-year planning plan would be, an assessment of the current organization would just be really healthy next step. I do want to acknowledge the increased appropriation from the town to 450, which I think is very generous. And just a suggestion on the 20-year graph, Martin, if we could put donations in a different color. Because again, I think we are, our community is the recipient of a lot of wonderful philanthropy. And even though it's highlighted in the back, I think visually, it'd be really powerful to see how that's grown over the years.
We can, absolutely. The reason this graph is designed this way is because this goes into the budget. This donation goes to the community.
Great. I just think, you know, for the public to see how much of these programs are actually supported through philanthropy and grants is nice. Wonderful. Any other questions? Okay, great. Thank you very much. My goodness, I think we've done it. An hour and 10 minutes, we've gone through the budget process. As I said earlier, there will be on January 16th, a public hearing for the budget. So this is our first presentation of all of this information from the administration and superintendent. So we'll continue to digest it. And if anyone in the public has questions on the budget, please come to the January 16th meeting. Kelly presenting tonight? Is Kelly presenting tonight?
No.
Okay.
That was incorporated in the central.
Hi, Kelly.
She doesn't have a strong voice at this point anyways. Fighting the same cold.
Okay, fantastic. Well, I hope you feel better and thank you for the supplement. We'll move on to committee discussions and votes to be taken. May I have a motion to accept the MOU?
We're actually going to table that. Because that did not come in.
Fantastic, then we will table that vote for the NTA and MPS. Thank you. So, we'll go on to, may I have a motion to accept an anonymous donation of miscellaneous clothing items to the NHS accidentals and naturals in the amount approximately of $2,677.
I'm curious if the items were valued at and they were sold for, is that, you add them together, is that like typical, how you do that? General question.
I'm going to defer to Martin on that.
The question is, if, according to the memo, the items were valued at 2,000, but when they sold them, they only raised 600. Is it typical that you add them together to get the value of the donation? I'm just curious. That's what I would think. Can we adjust that?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I thought we understood, I understood it to be that we received a donation of value of 2,000 plus we earned a donation of 677, so it's the total together. That's how I understand it. Okay, so may I please have a motion to accept that? Thank you. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. A motion to approve the December 5th, 2017 meeting minutes. May I have a second? I wasn't here, so I need to defer. Okay, all in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, so we will also move the December 12th workshop meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve our transfers and invoices? Second. All in favor? Thank you very much, any opposed? Mr. Cosart?
Just quickly, on the strategic plan, I'm meeting on the 28th of December with the person that we're talking about.
Great.
So I'll have more at the next meeting after.
Wonderful, thank you for that.
The annual report is something that typically give you around this time of year and then take any suggestions that you might have. And I will submit it to Erica Mooney and it will be included in the town report for the annual meeting. It covers pretty much all of the departments. And there are submissions by every principal and department head. So you'll see the facilities and technology and special education in there in addition to community school and all schools.
Great.
So if you have any questions, I've had a few minor edits that have been suggested to me and we will fix those and send it on to Erica. But it gives you a pretty good synopsis of last year.
I thought it was very well done. Thank you to you and the admin team for it.
And then, on the horizon, we are... in pretty good, pretty good shape. We do have something scheduled for January 2nd that Dr. Lefry, I know, won't want to miss. And that's the competition with Quiz Bowl team. Peter Panchi has said that they are eagerly awaiting and Dean Ray Weatherly is already talking... I wasn't going to use that word, but she's already thrown out the challenge.
They went down hard.
I just remember one year, I got an algebra question right. I was very impressed with myself.
But, you know, that's always a fun event and it's fun for them and usually fun for us.
May I ask the committee members if anyone would be opposed to moving the January 2nd meeting to January 9th and doing January 9th and 16th back-to-back? It may be possible that a couple of people will be traveling and returning, not able to be at the 2nd. So if we could do that, that would be great. Is that okay with you?
Just want to put out a guideline discussion for the...
Okay, great. Yeah, there's just a lot of important stuff on that January 2nd meeting. If we could make it on the 9th, I'd hate for anyone to miss it. Yes, great. Any, anything else from you, Mike?
16th, you've mentioned several times that we will open the hearing, conduct that, close that, and then go into the regular session. Martin will have the second quarter budget update. And then, usually do a very quick bullying update. Each of the principals will share with you what sort of reports have come in this year. I think District Report Card probably could move over to the February 6th. And then, at this point, we are scheduled on January 18th to have the FinCom presentation. And so, I would expect that this board will be voting on the budget of the 16th. Am I correct in that, Martin?
Okay, great, so that's another important meeting that has to be up. Fantastic, are there any subcommittee or work group reports? And I'm not sure where we did it, but I, oh, the 9th, we're going to have our safety and security update then. Fantastic.
We are. I will share with you something that we talked about at our last safety and security committee meeting. And that's that while we're happy to give an update, it is, we don't share all of the details of the security measures taken in the school district.
But I think it's important for everyone to know what initiatives have been taken and implemented. So we can understand in layman terms how safe our schools are.
And then we did add the science and social studies curriculum updates that you requested for the February meeting.
Great, fantastic. Okay, any other comments or questions? Great, may I have a motion to adjourn? Second. All in favor? Thank you very much, thank you.